Good evening and welcome to Washington, especially Five Points Washington, where we feel is kind of our crown jewel here in Washington. A great collaborative effort with four taxing bodies and one 501(c) not-for-profit. Five groups coming together and working together, which is amazing with this 135,000 square foot facility is second to none, not just in Downton, Illinois, but anywhere in the state of Illinois. And I can remember at that time Congressman Ray Luthard, when we had the groundbreaking, he called it "The Blueprint for America." And that's what working together is all about. I'll never forget your dad for saying that that day on the ground share when there was nothing here but a field. So, welcome to Washington. I hope you have eaten before, eaten after, or home room, maybe we need to sell snacks, sell up your gas tanks. It's been a lot of money before you even... Be sure you come back. And this is the law government works, an opportunity to meet a US Congressman and ask questions. And that's what government's all about. And that's what this great, great nation of ours is. So, warm Washington welcome. Darren, thank you so much for choosing us. Congressman Luthard, thank you so much.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay. Now, if I can just take just a minute to outline the structure that we're going to use tonight and then look into the questions. As I said several times as you walked in, we were handing out cards with questions on them. If you have not turned in your card yet, make sure you get it to one of the staffers out here in the aisles and they will take that for you so we can get them up here. I will be randomly choosing cards out of this box. And what we're going to do is I'll call three or four names at a time so that I'll give you some time to come out to the aisles. We need everybody to move to the aisle to ask your question so that everybody can hear you. And so we'll have staffers with microphones out of the aisles. We'll have one up in the middle here and then folks on either side. So just go to whichever one is closer to you and that way we'll be able to all hear your questions. And they will actually take your question and then they'll stay with you to make sure that you have an opportunity to ask a follow-up question if you want to do that. The object of this evening's meeting is to hear your thoughts and concerns and to have a thoughtful and constructive dialogue. We'd like to get through as many questions as possible so if we can limit the number of interjections and disruptions, that would be great because that'll make sure that we get through as many questions as we possibly can. We have the facility rented until 8:30 and at that time when they'd be wrapping up the event. So, we are on a long time schedule. So, the one other thing I would caution you, I'm sure it goes without saying, but if any language is profane or are unsuitable for a family audience, which is what we are here tonight, that will terminate that question and we'll move on to the next one. And with all that said, please join me in welcoming Congressman Darren Luthard.
Well, I want to thank Link Hobson, our clerk here in Tazewell County, and thank you Mayor Manilla for welcoming us here to Washington, to this beautiful facility. And I want to welcome all you here tonight, to have you here tonight for a discussion, a dialogue, to listen, and for me to hear from you. And that's what this is all about. You know, yesterday when I was talking to my 10-year-old son Teddy, I said I'm having a town hall tomorrow night and I was telling him a little bit about it and he says, "Dad, what if nobody shows up?" Well, I think we solved that, right? We have a great crowd tonight. And I tried to meet as many people as I could coming in. And people from all over the district, people from Henry County and from Springfield and from Bloomington and from Quincy and all over. And I appreciate you making the effort to be here tonight. And what I thought I'd do is I want to talk about a couple of things initially here and then obviously get to your questions. You know, it is a true honor and a privilege to represent the 710,000 people that I view in Washington DC. I've just been in this job for about 18 months. And I tell people I wasn't planning to run for this job. But two years ago, I was practicing law in Peoria, helping to raise our three boys with my wife Kristen, was serving as a Illinois State Senator, and my predecessor in this job had to resign and open up a special election. And at that time, my wife and I sat down and talked about whether we should run for this position. And we prayed about it and we went through all the pros and cons. And in my view, what I say is there's two things that I think you can do in this job. You can help people. In this position, you can help people regardless of your political affiliation, whether you're Republican or Democrat or independent, you can help people on a daily basis. And the second thing is, on a broader level, is how do you help secure the American dream that many of us have experienced in this country and that makes this country the great country that that is? And I think you have an opportunity at this level to do that. And I think about those core values that are important to me, fiscal responsibility, ethics and transparency, standing up for the Constitution, making sure to look out for the little guy. Those are the foundational things that help make the American dream possible. And in this job, I'm very fortunate to get elected. I went through four elections in 16 months. I had, I think, eight different debates during that time than a lot of public events. And I tell people all the time, it doesn't mean everybody's going to agree with me. In fact, you know, we have disagreements all the time. But I have 710,000 bosses and that's you in this room here and it's people all over my district. But what I try to do in going to Washington DC on a weekly basis is to understand my constituency, try to represent their values and do the best job I can there. And when I think about the important parts of this job, there's really three important parts of this job. One is voting, making sure that I vote on behalf of my constituents. I've taken, I did 902 votes in my 18 months. And those 902 votes, and what I tell people is when I vote, I got a yes button and a no button. I don't have a perfect button. And I think we want to have the perfect two days, but it's yes or no. But what I try to do is take my constituents in mind and vote the right way. The second thing in this job is good constituent service, making sure we help people, whether you're a veteran, whether you're on social security, whether you're a small business, maybe you have an immigration problem, helping people with good constituent service. And we've tried to do that. And lastly is be a strong vocal advocate for our district in terms of economic opportunities. How do we promote our district? How do we help our district rise above? How do we help out our farmers? How do we help out our companies and businesses and people and seniors? Try to do that in this job. And don't get me wrong, we have big challenges in this country. And I see it on a daily basis when I go to Washington DC and when I travel around my district. But I come back every single weekend to my district where my wife and three kids are. We live in Dunlap. And I come back every single weekend and I engage with people and I'll continue to do that as part of this job. And listen, democracy is messy. You find that out in these jobs. But you have to have engagement. That's what tonight is all about. Listening, having dialogue, having engagement and hearing from people so that you know the thought process that I go through when I have to make a decision on voting on something or advocating on something, those are the things. But when I travel around, when I think about the people I represent, there's a couple of core things that I think about people in Central and West Central Illinois. People who work hard, people that play by the rules, people that have a strong faith in God, people that have a very self-reliance in what they do. Those are the core values that we have in Central Illinois that are reflected in this room and all across my district. And so I couldn't be happier to be here tonight to listen to you, get your feedback, so that when we have to make decisions in Washington DC, whether that's on healthcare or tax reform or infrastructure or regulatory issues or whatever the issue is, foreign policy, you understand where I'm coming from and I understand where you're coming from. And that's what this dialogue and discussion is here tonight all about. So, I want to thank you and I want to get to our questions and look forward to answering them for you.
Thank you, Darren. If we could have Kelly Krueger from Athens and Lori Kimbrough from Normal move towards the aisles, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Kimbrough. I'm from Normal. And my question to you is I would like to hear your thoughts about the skinny bill or the skinny budget and in particular your thoughts on the cuts to the CDPG money as well as those for veterans.
Yeah. Did everyone hear the question about the budget? So, the President has proposed a budget that will come to the Congress and has come to the Congress. I look at the budget as a blueprint for what the President wants to put forth and his priorities and his administration's priorities. But it is a blueprint. It's a document in his vision on what he thinks. But we have the power of a person, Congress. And without giving you too much of a civics lesson, I would just tell you, Article 1 of the Constitution lays out what the legislative branch is in charge of. And we have checks and balances, but we also have the constitutional authority and the power of the person. And I give the President credit for trying to drive down costs in our budget. We're $20 trillion in debt. Now, you know, we've gone from $8 trillion in debt to $20 trillion in about the last nine years. $20 trillion is way too much. So our goal should be how do we drive down that debt but not sacrifice services? The budget that has been proposed, there are a number of things in there that I disagree with. The cuts that have been implemented to Department of Ag, I think have a serious effect on my district. Some of the cuts to EPA affect my district. The cuts to PBS, I have some issues with. So I look forward to having that budget brought to us and trying to reinstate, from my point of view, funding that I think is necessary and should be in there and really that protects the most vulnerable in our society. So our budget vote that we'll eventually have hopefully will reflect that we have funding that's at appropriate levels for those things you talk about. Thank you.
I'm Kelly Krueger and I'm from Athens, Illinois. I'm a breast cancer survivor and I carry the gene as well. So, the pre-existing conditions, I'm terrified that the pre-existing conditions could come out of the ACA. I was wondering if you could give me a comment that the ACA or anything new that they come up with would also cover pre-existing conditions and if you needed a suggestion on how to fix it, because I have one. Thank you for all.
He voted for everything that's now...
So, I want to answer your question. First of all, I'm glad you're here tonight and I'm glad to hear that you're recovered, but I understand what you're talking about in terms of still having the gene. But I think your question is very appropriate. Couple of things that I'll mention. I wasn't in Congress when the ACA was voted on, right? Because I've just been there, voted in there for 18 months. But I will tell you, put healthcare aside, I'm currently the sponsor of the bill in the House, HR 1121. It's a really interesting question. So what I would tell you is, what I would pledge to you, anything that undermines pre-existing conditions in any healthcare we vote on is something that I'm not going to support. I think, when I look at the ACA or Obamacare, there's a couple of things in there that have been beneficial and work. Pre-existing conditions, pre-existing conditions is an area that we need to protect and I'm supportive of that. I also think being able to keep your kids on their parents' insurance is a good thing till 25 or 26. So, I commit to you that keeping those two provisions in whatever we go for has to be part of this bill. Thank you.
Okay. If we could have, pardon me, if we could have Ron Krueger from Athens and Paul Stizio from Washington, please move to the aisles. Ron, I'm afraid, and Dan Baum from Springfield, if you could move to the aisle, please.
I voted for you. And largely because your father had the courage to work in the Obama administration. And he, as a person, I can see partisan thicketry is bad for our country. And I'm concerned, I'm deeply concerned about the Russian interference in our election. And the Trump campaign has colluded or cooperated with the Russian government who banned Rex Tillerson for strong ties to Russia. And when he and Paul Manafort, when Paul Manafort came on to the Trump team, that the Republican Party took out the plank and their platform that condemned, or condemned the Russian invasion of Crimea and talked about giving support to the Ukraine in military weapons. I've been, it's been magnified by the revelation that Mike Glenn lied to the Vice President about his dealings with the Russian government. He got Carter Page and Rex Tillerson. What I want, my question is, I want Donald Trump to release his tax returns.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You mentioned a number of things and I want to address all of them. The first thing you talked about, you mentioned my dad. I'm blessed to have two good parents. And you mentioned that you liked some of the things that he did. If you see my dad next time, what we're trying to get into country right now is college funds for grandkids. So if you can work on that for him, that's what we're trying to get in the heart of it. But I'm blessed to have two good parents. Let me just address two specific questions that you asked about. First of all, Russia. I spent 10 years as a state and federal prosecutor. So when I worked as a federal prosecutor, I managed 16 grand jury investigations involving terrorism. So I know a little bit about an investigative process. I am fully supportive of Mark Warner, a Democrat from Virginia, and the Intelligence Committee in the Senate along with Richard Burr doing their active investigation. That is ongoing as we speak today. In the House, I think Devin did this, it was right for him to step down. And I think it was the right thing to do for Adam Schiff and now Mike Conaway in the House to lead their investigation of exactly what you talked about, these Russian ties. Our intelligence committees on both sides are bipartisan. They're very professional. We've got smart people on rights on both sides. I am supportive of both those investigations. Let's see where those investigations go. Let's see what the conclusion is and the summary in a bipartisan way and then we'll make a decision on what the next steps are. You raised a number of questions, specifically on the Ukraine issue and the change in the platform. That needs to be vetted. That needs to be investigated. There needs to be interviews with witnesses. You have to go through that process. That's what an investigation does. So I am supportive of the Senate in a bipartisan way and the House in a bipartisan way continuing those investigations on taxes. I don't think our President should be treated any differently than any other President before. On taxes. I think he should release his taxes. I've said that publicly. And he promised that in the election to release his taxes. He promised that election. I think he has an obligation to do that.
If my representative, if Congress can do the latter way, force Donald Trump to reveal the fact, will you sign on to that?
But what I have said publicly is I will speak out and I will tell the President, I'll tell the administration, he needs to release his taxes. If that bill comes to the House floor and through regular order, I would happy to consider supporting that. Absolutely.
Paul Stizio from Washington?
Yes, sir.
First, Darren, I'd like to thank you for the job you've done in the course of Washington DC as Representative for the President. But question is, will a tax reform and infrastructure programs be accomplished this year?
Listen, I'm going to do everything that I can to make sure that tax reform and infrastructure gets done. Infrastructure for a district like mine, where I have 19 counties, is the backbone of my district. Whether it's our roads and bridges, whether it's our airports, whether it's our locks and dams on the Illinois Mississippi River, our infrastructure is vitally important. The President has proposed a $1 trillion infrastructure bill. I think he'll find a lot of bipartisan support on that issue. What infrastructure does, not only for our infrastructure, our roads and bridges and airports, what it does is it helps companies like Caterpillar and John Deere that make product. We need infrastructure to keep up globally with what's going on. So I am fully supportive of that. I look forward to working with the administration on that. Frankly, I think we ought to get to that sooner rather than later to get the economy going. Infrastructure is vitally important. Let me just readdress tax reform. Just so we're aware, we have not had tax reform in this country in 30 years, comprehensive tax reform. Last time it was done was 1986. So we have to fix our tax bill. We got to close the loopholes that too many corporations and businesses have. But more importantly, what we have to do is figure out how we make America competitive. If you talk to Caterpillar, for instance, or you talk to John Deere, we have the highest corporate tax rate and business rate in the entire industrialized world. So, if you think about it, we're at 36%. Camden's at 22%. Ireland, for instance, at 14%. To be competitive, we have to produce that now. Now, we got to figure out how we're going to pay for that. And that's going to be an important part of tax reform. We have to make that revenue neutral. I mentioned earlier, $20 trillion in debt. We have to pay for tax cuts and make sure it's revenue neutral. I'm not going to support tax cuts unless we make those revenue neutral. You have to do that. So one way that's been proposed is called the border adjustability tax. How does that work? So if you are a net exporter out of the country, remember, we represent 4.5% of the world's population. In a country of 7.5 billion, 4.5%. We have to have a global market basis. When, if you're an exporter like Caterpillar and you send it to China or to South America, you don't, you pay a fee going into those countries. It's called a VAT tax, VAT. We don't currently have that with products coming into our country. So what our proposal is, put a 20% border adjustability tax on products coming in. So if you're a Walmart and you produce a lot of products in Mexico and you want to bring them back, you're subject to that 20% VAT tax, border adjustability. Now, just to tell you, every other industrialized country has that VAT tax. This would put us in line with them. But what the border adjustability tax would do is pay for tax cuts. But one thing that I would tell you is when we think about tax reform, our goal with our economy is how do we get our growth rate up to 3% or 4%? So the last time our growth rate was at 4%, late 1990s, Bill Clinton was President, Newt Gingrich was Speaker, they worked together, we had a tech boom, we got to 4% growth. So what happened? Lot more money, we brought the debt down to nothing, zero, when we had the, we had the 4% growth. We had more money for education, more money for infrastructure, more money for research, more money for the things we should be spending money on. Our growth rate over the last eight years never got beyond 1.6, 1.7 growth. So our goal with tax reform is to get to 3% or 4% growth and help solve so many things in our society. So when I look at tax reform, now it's when I look at how do you jumpstart the economy so that we can sell more products around the world and make us more competitive? And that's what I'm looking to do. Thank you.
Before we get to Dan, I'd like to ask Jim Lindsay from Washington and Bob Trapp from Gridley and Sarah Breeden from Normal to head towards the aisle. Now let's put a Dan over there.
He wants to ask a question.
Representative, I'd be happy to ask my own question, but I would also much prefer to defer to this young lady here in the Capitol.
Hi there, Darren. My name's Marissa and as I said, I'm from Peoria and this is my friend Naomi from Washington.
Hello.
Our children are Medicaid recipients and my concern, you know, I know the Republicans want to throw out the ACA eventually and come up with a new healthcare act. My concern is Medicaid block grants and per capita caps being part of the new Medicaid or, you know, I don't support those things and I feel that they will hurt individuals with disabilities and low-income families. 72% of Medicaid recipients are elderly disabled and, elderly, yeah, and disabled children.
My main concern is that with Medicaid grants, it will affect the DSCC Medicaid waiver, which my son is on, and we will not be eligible for Medicaid. So I'm wondering what we can do to prevent something like that to happen because Illinois cannot afford the waiver.
Can you commit to not supporting a healthcare act or any changes that will gut Medicaid and hurt individuals with disabilities and low-income families?
So, thank you very much for sharing your story and for being here tonight. I had a chance to visit with all four of you when you came in and I appreciate you being here. Medicaid has been a program that has worked very, very well for what it was intended to do, for women and people with disabilities and children. And so Medicaid is, Medicaid, when it's spent the way it's supposed to be, is exactly what you said, it's to help the most vulnerable in our society. I am fully, fully supportive of helping the most vulnerable in our society. That's what Medicaid is set out to do, to help people just like you. And I'm supportive of that. I did want to mention, so anything that cuts the most vulnerable, I'm not supportive of. I'm not. But I will tell you this on Medicaid. Medicaid has tripled in the United States since Bill Clinton was President. Medicaid, what it was originally intended for, has not, not been that way. What do I mean by that? Today, able-bodied, working men, can your body qualify for Medicaid? I don't think that's an appropriate use of Medicaid. And if you, if you think about, this is taxpayer money. You all pay for Medicaid. So with anything in government, you ought to figure out how you make it more efficient, effective, efficient and accountable. We should always be thinking about that. Medicaid for the most vulnerable has to be there. I'm not going to jeopardize that. I don't want to jeopardize that. And anything we should do, we have to protect the most vulnerable. And I'll do that.
Hi, I'm Bob Trapp from Widdie. And first of all, I want to thank you for coming. I mean, not a time I intend to do this, but I'm glad to be here. First, I'd like to give you highly and warmly to take Elecare away from Texas during the formulary season. And for more, to give tax breaks to the local community in the county to use the code while off of Elecare, give him more. One of the big problems, you have some parents who make something my company that they don't want. I couldn't ride here tonight without insurance. The state of Illinois forces me to buy car insurance. Are you going to run a bill so I have to buy car insurance? Or is that okay? It's just a healthcare, you don't think it should have to buy. Thank you for introducing your question.
Thank you for answering your question regarding health care. Again, I wasn't in Congress when, when the ACA was passed. But, here's the reality. If you, if you think back during the presidential election in the fall, Hillary Clinton even said we need to change, revise, and fix Obamacare. So, if we, if we do nothing, if we do nothing with Obamacare, it's going to collapse. So, so I will go back to what I've said with health care. How, here's what we have to do with health care. We have to figure out what's worked with Obamacare, and I mentioned two things earlier. Pre-existing conditions has to be a part of that. Keeping your kids on insurance until twenty-five or twenty-six has to be a part of that. But, what do we do about, in my district, the number one complaint I gave was premiums. The average premium has gone up fifty-five percent compared to my district. Fifty-five percent! So, the statistics show that. Um, deductibles, deductibles are way too high. So, people may say they have insurance, but with a deductible of five or six or seven thousand dollars, it's not affordable healthcare. So, what we have to do is figure out, um, what I hope in a bipartisan way is to keep those provisions that have worked in Obamacare, protect Medicaid for the most vulnerable, but figure out how we drive down the costs. Remember your promises made in Obamacare. Obamacare is a primary issue. And, and lastly, no one just said, listen, we may have philosophical differences on some of these issues, but the reality is, we have to fix this. We have to fix it. It's gonna collapse.
Yes, uh, we're listening to your questions. Number one, I don't have much faith in the House Senate investigations on the, on the Russia problem, but I wonder if you would, uh, before I have a committee taking the investigation of Russia and, uh, have to make sure that it's not a puzzle instead of behind closed doors. And, uh, one other quick question, would you ever vote for a single payer system for health care?
So, let me just say on both your questions. On, on the, on the Russia issue, listen, I had a lot of confidence in the Senate bipartisan committee. I mentioned Democrats and Republicans from both committees investigating. They said to us, let us do our investigation first and see what conclusions come about. Listen, as a prosecutor, if at the end of that, that warrants a further step, an independent prosecutor, then that, then we'll look at that option of doing that. But we have to support the current investigation. Second part is on single payer. You bring me a bill on single, from single payer, I'm happy to review it and look at it. I'm hap, I'll look, I'll look at any piece of legislation. But what I want to see is, how is that gonna affect my constituency? How is that gonna affect the people in my district? And most importantly is, how is that gonna help bring healthcare to people that need it? And if that bill will do that, and it's officially sound bill, I'm happy to consider it.
Uh, I've traveled several places in the world since nineteen ninety-four when Hillary Clinton tried to get healthcare, and I've probably talked to somewhere in America, we could sell many thousand people from all over the world that thinks their single payer program basically is the best thing in the world to get me around, like, the United States don't have it today.
Thanks, Sarah. Uh, before we get to Sarah, if I could have Roger Day from Bloomington, Michelle Zalesko from Morton, and Mary Beth Taylor from Bloomington head towards the aisle. Uh, Andrew wants to go to Sarah.
Hi, this is Sarah Breeden from Normal, and I'm gonna echo what has just been said by a couple people before I close my call, and that is, you do have a solution. It is single payer. You can call Bernie Sanders to get the board. And what I worry about in the, I do believe that you want us to keep the provisions of kids until they're twenty-six, and I do believe that you want to keep the provisions of pre-existing conditions. What I'm very concerned about with the way that you want to do that is the whole pre-existing conditions means that you're gonna be in a high-risk pool, and you're basically gonna penalize the previous to be in that. So, consequently, to have higher-risk pools, if it concentrates the risk in places where people already have issues, it should be spread out amongst everyone. In all, in all the constituencies, and that is very clearly what this group feels would be best with constituents. So, I'm not gonna speak to that, and I have my personal question.
Well, thank you for, uh, for that coming out. I have not mentioned high-risk pooling once this entire time. What I've said, and look at the bill that I have co-sponsored, put aside, it says, "Pre-existing conditions should be a part of, of any healthcare bill", and we cannot undermine that provision in there. So, that's the reality. That's my name on a piece of legislation, and I'm happy to give it for you. Uh, eleven twenty-one is, is the, the number on it. So, that has to be part of healthcare, and figuring out how we do that. Again, we're bringing down premiums, that's what we ought to look for. Again, taking the provisions that have been successful in Obamacare, but helping to drive down costs. That's what we need to look for in, in, as I look at legislation and what will, by the way, I haven't had an opportunity to vote on anything yet. The vote never happened. So, any legislation that gets brought, I'm gonna be looking for those two things and help costs are driven down for my constituents.
You personally can change your bill to incorporate what we're all saying here. So, even though you said you haven't voted on that legislation, you're proposing legislation. So, what you propose should incorporate what we're talking about. But on the mark to what I stood up to ask in the first place, I appreciate that you personally have your religion. We all know you're a strong practicing Catholic, and we all know that you are pro-life. Your religion does not belong in my body.
As I said before, and you know, um, I, I appreciate your passion and what you believe in. Uh, and as I said at the beginning of this, we may agree to disagree on issues, uh, you know, that, that we don't, and that's part of our democracy.
We don't buy abortion, don't have one! I'm not telling you to have abortion. I mean, you should not be governing my body with your religion.
This is a, this is an issue that I, that I have a problem with Americans. And, and I will tell you, um, the, the position that I take on, on life and abortion, what I will tell you is, so I've been through four elections in sixteen months, and every one of those elections, I went to the people and told them why I was pro-life, why I believed in the sake of life, why I was against abortion. Now, part of our democracy is, I have to vote before the voters. And, and, and when I went before the voters, they stood proudly for what I believe in. I'm, I'm happy to vote. Now, I take every election and every vote, I put it very seriously. Every single one, and if I continue to run, I'll do that. But I'm gonna be passionate about what I believe in and what the voters decide.
You have voters in this ground that are all telling you in the favor of what I just said, creating an invisible way of being a fast.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Really appreciate that. Finding Roger Day from Bloomington, Illinois, and my question about campaign finance. Uh, the Federal Election Commission reports that for the campaign period ending on December thirty-first, twenty sixteen, you received about forty-two percent of your campaign finance money from PACs and other committees, and you received about six point five percent from small donors, donors who contribute two hundred dollars or less each. For the first three months of twenty seventeen, the same organization reports that you received about sixty-four percent from PACs and other campaign committees, and only six point nine percent from small donors. My question, and part of the reason we're here tonight, and I really appreciate it because you're being held accountable, how will you be held accountable when so much of your money comes from outside organizations rather than your constituents?
I think you raise a valid point in general about campaign finance. We will agree, it costs too much money to run for office. Whether you're a challenger or whether you're in office, it costs way too much money and the amount of money. We just had a special election in Georgia last night, fourteen million dollars on one side, right? A lot of outside money. You know, that's a problem, and I'm open to discussion on how we solve that problem without jeopardizing free speech. To your specific point, I've had four elections in sixteen months. You know, when, when I've run in those elections, the majority of the money that I've raised for those four elections came from inside of my district. I get money from people that want to give me money, uh, PACs or other organizations, or people that want to contribute to me and, and want to contribute to the campaign. If they believe in the issues I stand for, the way that I vote, the way that I conduct myself, that's part of what our democratic process is. But taking that money from whatever organization it is, doesn't tie my vote to anything that they want me to do or I don't want to do. I'm here to say, but, but if you, if you can give me another system where, um, where we're not jeopardizing free speech under the Constitution, read, read the Citizens United case by the Supreme Court. So, so, you know, whether you believe it or not, the five court decisions said what free speech is. Now, we can disagree on that, right? That's what we said there. But the Supreme Court is the law of the land. And, and so, I, I, I am open-minded about finding out a way how we fund campaigns and how we make them less expensive. And I'm open to working on that and other like-minded initiatives. Thank you.
Michelle Zalesko from Morton, I was just about to ask you on the ACA, until you said, "Able-bodied, working men are eligible for Medicaid". There may be a few, but my dear sweet brother died just short of his sixtieth birthday because he never had insurance through his employer, and he was not eligible for any other kind of insurance. But my question is, I hope you educate me. When we, when people criticize the ACA, they're like, well, it's because, you know, in Wyoming, we only had one choice, or the premiums were too high. It's not understanding that ACA does not mandate how many options you have, how many people, or how many choices you have, providers you have, nor does it mandate the cost. That's the insurance company. I, I fear that we're not using it there, but I don't think that's gonna happen for a number of years. Why can't we just fix what's wrong with the ACA? Why can't we destroy all those people's lives?
First of all, my, my sympathies for your brother, and I'm sorry to hear that. Um, your specific question, I agree with you, fixing it. But remember, when the ACA was passed, remember what the promises were. You can have a lot of options. So, I'll give you an example. In the nineteen counties I represent, when ACA was passed, you had a number of choices. So, if you lived in Pike County or Adams County, a rural part of my district, you had a number of choices. Today, one choice, maybe none. So, so, so what I'm telling you is, let's work on fixing that. So, let's, let's work on making insurance companies get more options. But you gotta do that legisstratively. You have to pass a law, and that's what we're talking about with healthcare reform. So, why don't we take what's worked, pre-existing conditions, helping the most vulnerable, um, keeping kids on insurance, and helping to create more options? That's what we're trying to do. That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking. The, the Trump era said, let's do a free tax reform. My brother, who didn't have the income to go, well, okay, I could pay three hundred fifty a month for healthcare, I mean, because I'm gonna get two thousand back in taxes. He couldn't afford the three fifty a month. So, the, this whole tax, this tax burden is irrational for poor people. You're, you're making my point. Premiums have gone up way too high, and deductibles have gone way too high. That wasn't anticipating when Obamacare passed. Skyrocket, that was not anticipating. We agree that we have to fix it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we go to Tanner, if I could have Joe Felder from Peoria, Hanu Kosakata from Bloomington, and Susan Robertson from Washington, please head towards the aisle. And now Tanner, let's go to you.
Uh, thank you, Congresswoman, for meeting with Mrs. Stevens. And I too am very concerned about all the issues that have been raised. I also have another issue that I'm particularly concerned about, and it's the degradation of our environment.
Yes.
And the address of climate change, um, not only our generation, but the generations to come. And I'd like to know how we're going to address that issue.
Thank you for your question regarding the environment and the climate change. Um, couple things. Uh, nobody enjoys the outdoors more than me. I just took my sons on a backpack trip to Utah last week, where we were outdoors for six days. Um, I chose to bring my three boys back to Illinois to raise them in our community. Um, and the environment, and the environment we live in is vitally important to my children and to my constituents. Regarding climate change, I agree with you. The climate is changing, and I believe humans play a role in that. There is no doubt about that. So, what, but what is, the question is, the question is, at, at, at what level do they play a role? Is that fifty-one percent? Is that thirty-five percent? What is that? So... Read the science! And, and what I will tell you is, again, I learn something in this job every single day. I learn from people that I work with, I learn from committees I serve on. I am open-minded to listening to people that can give me a different view on that. So, I'm gonna tell you, I, I, if, if, if I am convinced that this is all they may, which I'm not at this point, that there are lots of things that have to... So, when I, when I move to, when I am supportive of, I am supportive of a clean energy policy. Okay? What does that mean? That means clean coal. Means solar. Clean energy policy, I am supportive of.
So, are you saying that what you would not do away with or degrade the Clean Air Act that's currently in effect? And my other issue would be, are, are you saying that over, the fact that over ninety percent of the top scientists in the world dealing with issues think that it is a very serious issue, that it is possible?
I'm happy to look at the information that you just discussed. Again, what I will tell you is, when I, when I look, I think reasonableness is the key with all of this. Reasonableness. Again, am I supportive of gutting the Clean Air Act? No. I'm not supportive of gutting the Clean Air Act. The Clean Air Act has worked well in this country. But I think we have to be careful about, I'll give you an example for, you look at Caterpillar, in the last five years, it's gone from a company that was sixty-six billion dollars of profits, down to about thirty-eight billion. A big part of that was emissions control, environment, things like that. So, it hasn't affected, we've not talked to anybody at Caterpillar, they'll tell you that. What I can tell you is, reasonableness with every regulation is important, and recognizing that our climate is changing, that our climate is changing, humans play a role in that, and figuring out to the best of our scientific determination what the cause of that is. And I look forward to that.
Brad, briefly head over there.
It's Joe. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Felder, I'm from Peoria. You've been emphasizing your nonpartisanship, and so my question to you is, since Trump has taken office, can you name the bills that have come to a vote in the House where you have opposed the Republican leadership?
So, your question. So, I want to tell you a couple things. During the campaign, when President, when campaign-elect Trump called for a Muslim ban, I publicly, in front of the press and anybody that listens, said, "This is wrong, it's antithetical to our Constitution, it's against every founding principle that we stand for", and said it was, "It actually should be reversed, it wouldn't ever stand for." So, that's it, that's the point. Second thing, second thing, I disagree with the President on trade. The President has a different position than I on trade, so I don't agree with the President that we should rip up NAFTA, that we should rip up TPP, trading plus jobs and economic opportunities for Central Illinois. So, I disagree with him on that. Thirdly, let me finish. Thirdly, I don't think that, oh, let me tell you that, I think the President, as I said before, should release his taxes, right? So, I'm in favor of him on that. And so, those are three specific things that I disagree with the President. Lastly, on the budget, there's a number of things in there, the cuts to Department of Commerce, the cuts to some of our research programs, I'm not supportive of that. I think we have to have a budget that puts those back in. So, again, there are things that, those are three specific things that I disagree with him on.
You did not answer my question.
So, you can look at my voting record, you can look at my voting record, and all of those issues that I just mentioned to you, those are issues that have not come for a vote, but I publicly still put those, and I will continue to do that.
The question was about those issues that had come for a vote.
Let me add, please, here's what I want, tell me the piece of legislation that you are opposed to.
I think it's obvious by now that you have no intention of answering my question.
I'm happy, sir, I'm happy to hear about a specific piece of legislation.
I asked you to list the bills that have come to a vote since Trump took office, where you opposed the Republican leadership.
I'll give you a list of 10 of them before we leave tonight. Look, this is what I'm saying, is there a specific issue that you don't think sort of? Thank you.
My name is Kaman Kotakota, and you are new here. I'm working in State Farm Insurance. Here are my friends and colleagues, Gil Silvar, Shankaran, and Sukumar. And just here, we came to know some of the inputs on HR 392 bill that is getting that green cards, when we are getting that green cards. I know some bills, some discussions are going in Washington. My final report and update is on the inputs, what we're expecting.
Hi, my name is Mark. So, me and my family came here in 2005 legally, and just like every other American came to this country, we want to live the American dream. And so, I've been living in the US for 12 years, which is more than half my life, but I'm still waiting on a new card, and it's not going to happen for another 10 to 20 years. Because of this, our employment opportunities, our, I mean, investment opportunities, everything is inhibited. So, just to give you an example, my dad, his coworker, who's a, one of his coworkers who actually started, then my dad's coworker was from Sri Lanka, my dad's from India. So, the Sri Lankan is already moved on into much higher position, has improved his life and everything. We're still sitting in the same position because the age, the instance right now is that the quotas that are given for green cards are based on per-country system, which means there's only 7% allowed for India and every other country, even though there's like only 5% coming from other countries. So, what I want, my question to you is, no, there is a bill that's already been discussed, which is the HR 392 bill that he discussed, which is a fairness for all high-skill immigrants bill. So, would you be willing to co-sponsor this bill?
So, thank you for your question from immigration. And first of all, I appreciate you coming over here and sharing your family stories. As I've talked about before, my ancestors came from Lebanon, came here not speaking in English, but came with that dream of living in America for all the reasons that you came to America. What I have said publicly is, and I just said this the other day, I, in this job, I've got to participate in legal immigration ceremonies, naturalization ceremonies, and there's nothing more patriotic than going to a naturalization ceremony and seeing people that did everything we asked them to do. They played by the rules, they went back to their country of origin, they paid a fee, they went through a background check, they did all that, and they came here legally, and ended up being our best citizens. So proud to be here. The last ceremony I was at last week, 38 countries represented. It's a great experience. But what I have said publicly, we need to change our legal immigration process. It should not take four years to come to this country legally. And so, streamlining that process is what we need to do. Opening up that, right now, about a million, about a million and one people legally immigrate to the United States. I think that needs to expand. And to your point, filling those roles at State Farm, Caterpillar, where we need high-skill workers there, that has to be a part of that. So, reforming, streamlining our legal immigration process has to be part of the broader question on that. I am 100% supportive of that, and we'll be working to do that. You're welcome. Thank you.
Congressman Darin Lavo, this bill is not asking any increase of the numbers, we are asking the fairness. Do you support fairness or not? That's it. Like, we are asking the co-sponsorship for this bill, HR 392, fairness to high-skill immigrants, which has a bipartisan support and co-sponsor around 190-plus co-sponsors. This bill is not new. This bill has been there in Congress since 2011. This bill passed in Congress with 389 votes in 2011. Same bill reintroduced again by Congressman Jason Chaffee in the 2015. We don't have any hope in the near future as he is resigning from his job, so there is no one is going to touch this kind of bill in the future, so we are asking about co-sponsorship instead of support.
Happy to consider that, but I'll take it kindly to the bill. Happy to work with you, hon, thank you.
Tanner, before we get to you, I have Jay Gruber from Metamora, Cecil Taylor from Washington, and Connie Kumunelli from Peoria, head towards the aisles, please. And then Tanner, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Susan Robertson from Stanford, and my question to you is, what's your stance on the repeal of the Clean Water Rule?
Susan, thanks for your question. Just so everyone knows, you're talking about the screen protection rule?
Yes.
Yeah. So, my position on that is, again, I mentioned earlier, you have to have balance with regulations. So, that regulation, the screen protection rule, let's put it in context, right? That was put in as an executive order. So, what's an executive order? Executive order is something that was put in arbitrarily by the administration. So, under the Obama administration, that provision didn't come to Congress, didn't get voted on by representatives. Now, I wasn't there yet, but it didn't get voted on by anybody. So, what happened is, there was a, there was a thought within the EPA with the Obama administration, that we want to do this arbitrarily. I don't think that's the right way to go about with regulations. So, if that comes to Congress and has witnesses and debate and let people hear where they stand on that issue, I think that's the right approach. Now, I've taken that approach on every regulation. I've said that to the new administration. There should be no executive orders that don't come through Congress the way that it should. Again, I go back to Article 1 of the Constitution. We have a legislative obligation to the people that elect us to vote on these things. So, on that, I voted to repeal that because it wasn't done the right way.
You had mentioned the term arbitrarily, could you just explain what you mean by that?
What I meant by arbitrarily? Yeah, so, I mean, arbitrarily, what I mean is, that provision has a big effect on what goes on all around the country. But something that that's, that's that important to waterways and streams and lakes and rivers, whether that's our farmers or whether that's any entity, that didn't go, I mean, it didn't have a committee hearing. It didn't have witnesses. None of my farmers could go to Washington DC and say, "This is why we believe this is good" or "bad". Nobody from Caterpillar could go and say, "Why, this is good or bad". None of the citizens could weigh in. It was a decision done by an executive or signed by the President based on a policy that he thought was good for the country. That may be fine, but let it go through the process, the democratic process. Every executive order should be done.
So, it sounds to me like you're saying that your position is, you have a problem with the way it was implemented.
Process.
My question is, what your stance is specifically on the content of the law?
If no one like that goes through the committee process and stays exactly the same way that it is, and goes through the right process, then I'm happy to look at supporting that and see how it affects my constituents.
Hello, Representative Lohud, it is a pleasure to talk to you again. My name is Jay Gruber, I'm a CPA, and I've helped many people meet their tax obligations and their obligations to their families who they love. Big expenses include doing taxes, and big expenses include your healthcare. All of these things matter. One of the things about money is that it does have records, and I really want you to be creative about figuring out how to have Congress use its present power to release the tax returns for Mr. Trump. That he chooses not to release them does not release our Congress members of their obligation to find a way to make him comply with appropriate transparency. And I appreciate that you want transparency too.
Thank you, and thanks for all you do as a CPA. I'll reiterate what I said earlier, I think the President should release his taxes. He said that in the campaign, he has an obligation to do that. Second thing is, I don't think he should be different than any other President that's come before us. So, that, he has to abide by that. So, I'm supportive of that, and we'll continue to do that. I also, I'm also supportive of legislation that say, any presidential candidate in the future should release their taxes. Now, let me, now, I want to say one last thing on this. And again, this is part of our democracy that sometimes we like and sometimes we don't like. The issue of President Trump as candidate, Trump not releasing his taxes, right? So, for six, he'd be 16 Republican candidates, and every day said, "Release your taxes, release your taxes". He beat all 16 of them, right? And then we had a general election where every day somebody said, "Release your taxes", and what happened? Voters went there and they voted for him. Now, you see, sometimes we like democracies, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we don't. I mean, when it benefits us to do, listen, do I think, that's right, but he went before the voters in this country? And, I say, look, I go back to my original point that I told you, he should release them. Yes, sir.
Cecil Taylor from Washington on the line. I also had a question about the screen protection rule, and I was going to ask you to explain your rationale for voting to repeal it, which you've already done in part. But I think you did not cover the main purpose of that rule, which was to inhibit the coal mining companies in the Appalachians who have been engaging in non-topical coal mining in East Kentucky and South across Virginia, and have just devastated the Appalachians in that region. And not only the mountains, but have destroyed the lives of the people who live there also. I wanted to ask you if you've actually looked at aerial photographs of this region, and if so, how can you further defend your vote to repeal the street protection rule when Michael B. Jackson?
I think you raised a valid point, and obviously, I've looked at some of those visuals from the aerial and otherwise. What I'm saying is, what you're talking about there, what was wrong with the President bringing that to a legislative hearing? To have that go through the legislative process? To let people vote on it? That was not done. There, again, we all speak for the Constitution. We have, we have equal branches of government, but you can't legislate in the executive branch. And that's what that did. But all I'm saying is, that, what you just advocated, I wish you could have come to Congress and advocated for that and had a hearing and had a debate on it. Show those pictures. Hear from people on both sides of the issue before the decision was made. That was never done.
You owe our representative.
It's never done.
You owe our representative.
Who's next?
Okay, just one second before we get to you, Brad, if I could have Julie Webster from Dunlap, Dan Austin from Bloomington, and Manuel Fuentes from East Peoria, start heading toward the aisles, please. And then, Brad, go ahead.
I'm Connie Kumunelli, and I'm from Peoria. And my brother just retired last week from the EPA, and he retired not because he wanted to, but because he was hearing all the scary things that are coming down about getting rid of the EPA. And so, my question is, how does getting rid of the EPA or cutting down the EPA help our physical environment, which is what sustains all of us?
I think you raised a valid point. There are many positive, good things the EPA does for our environment on a daily basis, both our state EPA and our federal EPA. As I mentioned earlier, this is a proposal, this is a blueprint the President sends to Congress. Now, it's in charge, we're in charge now of figuring out how much that cut should be. Should it be 30%? Should it be 15? Should it be nothing? Right? So, that's a debate we're going to have on the validity and the merits of money being spent. This is our taxpayer money. And everything I look at is, is this money being well-spent when we're $20 trillion in debt? And I'm going to go through that analysis. Now, I have been also critical, I will tell you, I have been critical of the President breaking the caps on the military, right? On military spending. How are we going to afford to continue to grow our military like we're doing? How are we going to afford $1 trillion in infrastructure? How are we going to afford an $18 billion wall along the border? These are things that cost money. So, so, my point is, listen, we have to look out for the taxpayer and being $20 trillion in debt, but to your specific point, I think that is a cut that is too much, and figuring out how much we restore so that we don't jeopardize the vital services the EPA provides is what I will do with your member Congress. Thank you. Yes, who's next? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dan Augustine, and I live in the city of Bloomington, and I'm a retired Bloomington employee. So, I'm quite aware of transparency and whatnot. During our current President's campaign, he made a lot of promises which now he's backing off of, and the one, and I'm going to beat this horse just a little bit more, was his tax returns. And the one, and I'm going to beat this horse just a little bit more, was his tax returns. He actually didn't even reveal his tax returns. You just stated earlier tonight that you have seven hundred and fourteen thousand losses in your district, correct?
That's correct.
And I want to...this requires...
That's too long.
This requires a yes or no answer. Will you sponsor and support a bill required for President Trump and future presidents to release their tax returns by saying, "I will"?
I mean, beat what I just said. I am supportive of legislation that requires every presidential candidate running to release their taxes. Absolutely.
That was not my question. That was not my question.
So, I just gave you my answer, which is, I will absolutely support legislation that requires every presidential candidate to release their taxes. Yes. Who's next?
Brad, you have another one?
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Julie from Dunlap, and I have a question related to fiscal responsibility.
Yes.
I work for the U.S. Army, and I wonder when Congress would finish targeting the Department of Defense. I believe it's been going on a decade.
First of all, thank you for your service and working for the Department. I'm not aware of that issue, but I'm going to write it down and have my staff look into it, and I'm happy to follow up with you. Again, I was not aware of an audit that had been going on that long, but I'm happy to look into it. Thank you. Thanks for answering. Who's next, Lee?
Okay. Then I have Robert Monn from Peoria, and Shaiyan Laxman from Bloomington, and Tim Vega from Washington. Head towards the microphone, please. Brad?
I just...sorry. Nice, I'm next on the line. We appreciate your service in the U.S. Congress, first of all.
Thank you.
And for our family's service as well.
Thank you.
The question I wrote down, I decided not to ask. I want to ask a different one.
That's fine.
The environment in the U.S. Congress, house and cell, seems to be rather toxic. I can remember a time when a president that I voted for named Reagan got together with a leader of the House, Tip O'Neill, and fixed Social Security, partly through increasing the retirement age and partly through increasing taxes. I can't conceive of something like that happening today. What do you think you can do to help that toxic environment? You mentioned several times tonight, bipartisan shit. I don't see bipartisan shit.
Thank you for your thoughtful question. I would just tell you, couldn't agree with you more in the ranker and the partisanship that we currently have in Congress. In my short eighteen months being there, it is toxic in a lot of ways. It is partisan, and we've only...we've become balkanized in a lot of ways, right? Balkanized on our own side, Republican and Democrat. So, to your question, what do you do about that? You know, one small thing to make Congress work together is a piece of legislation that I introduced last Congress, and I just reintroduced it about six weeks ago. It's called the Congress of Tomorrow. So, I introduced this legislation with a Democrat from Chicago named Dan LeKinsky. It's got a different district than I do, a very urban district in Chicago. He votes a lot different than I do. I got a pretty Republican district. But what we both said is, how do we fix the institution of Congress? So, our legislation, called the Congress of Tomorrow, does this. What we say is, pass this legislation to set up a joint committee to reform Congress. That joint committee would be twelve senators, twelve House members, equally divided between Republicans and Democrats, so bipartisan by camera. This committee would need for a year and a half to decide on how we fix ourselves. Now, this is not a new idea. This was built three times in the last century. Nineteen forty-four, nineteen sixty-six, nineteen ninety-two. Nineteen ninety-two, when this committee was set up, joint committee, they came back with a number of proposals on how you fix Congress, and they ultimately ended up being implemented. But for instance, we don't have a mechanism right now, a committee, a platform, to have these issues debated. So, for instance, maybe you want to change how the budgeting process works, or you want to change how appropriations are done. Some people have said they need members to spend more time with each other. It's kind of a novel idea. To spend more time with family and work together, that's another proposal. How we change the filibuster? How does the Senate and the House work better together? So, right now, none of those proposals can be debated. Our joint committee...by the way, the legislation was introduced about six weeks ago. We have fifty-two cosponsors, equally divided between Republicans and Democrats in the House. Very liberal Democrats, very conservative Republicans, some from the Freedom Caucus. But what they all agree on is that we have to reform ourselves. So, what I'm hoping is, we're going to build up our cosponsors, get to a point where we're going to take a vote in the House, and we purposely didn't get anybody from leadership on board. So, we didn't get Paul Ryan or any leadership or any of the Democrats on board. It's grassroots. So, you can look it up on my website, Congress of Tomorrow. I believe strongly in it. Once we get this committee set up, we will then be able to try to fix ourselves. Now, there's a long ways to go, but it's a start. And when people say, "What are you doing to fix Congress?", this is what we're doing to fix Congress. Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead, sir. Mike out? You got another one?
Manuel from East Peoria. Thank you for your holding this event, Congressman. Now, my question to you is simple. You and most other Republicans, I may be stereotyping this, but you guys believe that the ACA will collapse if it is not repealed and replaced. How can you keep saying that when there are numerous sources, including the Congressional Budget Office, that has been fought? That's true. Stop it. What I want, and we, every Republican, to stop is to kill and replace...get off people. Work with the Democrats. Fix it and skin it. Let's move on with it. Go ahead.
We can agree at this point on whether it's going to...I want to just tell you again, I'll go back to the presidential campaign. Listen to Hillary Clinton and Bill Clinton, what they said about the ACA. Has to be revised, amended, fixed. Maybe we're talking about the same thing. The ACA, if it is not changed, is going to collapse. It's a judgment that goes on. So, I want to fix it. I mean, I want to fix premiums going way too high, deductibles going way too high. We can do that. You got to work in a bipartisan way to do that. Clearly, we have an obligation to fix the ACA. Follow up on that? Sure. Go ahead.
Fix it.
Thank you. Who's next, Lee? Go ahead, Brad.
I thank you for taking the time. I appreciate you engaging in civic dialogue, civic discourse, with the approach of many. I'm proud of you, and I'm grateful for your efforts right there, and all of the ladies and guards. I have a question, but this is a comment to be a dead horse. Our phones are wonderful and have all kinds of wonderful information. On February twenty-seventh, Bill Pasquale had a bill that allowed the Ways and Means Committee to commit it to get Trump to release his tax return, dejoin two hundred and twenty-eight of your colleagues, and voting against it.
So, two things, two things. I don't serve on the Ways and Means Committee when that bill came out. And secondly, when it was brought up on the floor, it was done through a procedural move where it never went through a committee. So, that failed in committee, right? So, what you did...just full disclosure, what you didn't say is, that was brought to the Ways and Means Committee, failed, right? So, it didn't make it out of the committee, but then it would go to the Rules Committee and then to the House floor. So, that was brought in a...with a procedural move that brought that to the floor. Again, I'm voting against all of those mimicry tricks on both sides of the aisle when they use mimicry to bring those to the floor. Anything that gets through the committee process, I will do that. And I stand by my public statements as far as this tax...
Not though you got...oh, you got...
Say that again?
Okay. Just looking at the question.
Sure.
So, I heard a stat the other day. Your district is ninety-one percent white. And looking around this room, it's kind of similar to this. So, I have two questions. One, what are your thoughts on white privilege? And two, what are you going to do to be an ally for those of us who are minority who have been discriminated, threatened, persecuted, or attacked for the color of our skin?
So, taking those one at a time, the question on white privilege, listen, alls I can tell you is my own story. You know, I'm a...you know, my father was Lebanese, my mother was Dutch or German. I mean, we're all come from somewhere else, right? We're a country of immigrants. I've been fortunate enough to travel to Lebanon and see where my great-grandparents came from. Came down from a village. They didn't speak any English, but they wanted to come to America to live the American dream, and they wound up in Peoria, Illinois, and two generations later, Peoria today. And I guess what I'm saying is, we all go through struggles. Now, without getting too much into the white privilege, I will just tell you, as a prosecutor, as a prosecutor in Tazewell County, I was an assistant state's attorney. I prosecuted the first hate crime in Tazewell County when I worked in the Assistant State's Attorney Court. First hate crime, and people all know. Now, I also, when I served as a federal prosecutor, prosecuted a number of cases that involved crimes that discriminated against different ethnicities, and worked on those issues. I worked on a task force that involved that. Alls I would tell you is, it's an issue that we need to work on, and I'm happy to do that. And I've had a record of doing that as a prosecutor, both at the local level and the federal level, and it's something I'm conscious of with my own upbringing and where I come from. But we are a melting pot in this country. We are an immigrant nation, and we need to be cognizant of that. And as somebody that represents a district, I don't know if it's ninety-one percent white, but it's a pretty rural district, a lot of good people...I go back to what I said about the people that I represent. People that work hard, play by the rules, strong faith in God, very self-reliant, those are the people that I represent, and I'm proud to represent those people. Thank you.
So, you're going to answer the second part of the question, what are you going to do to be an ally for those of us who have...you talked about your service as a prosecutor. What are you doing as a representative to be an ally?
Yeah, well, firstly, first of all, speaking out on the Muslim man and doing that publicly, I was proud to do that. Second thing, I've visited our mosque in Peoria on two different occasions, one publicly, one privately, to meet with folks that have different religion than I do. I've met with the interfaith group on a number of occasions to hear from them. Having a dialogue, having a discussion is part of what I should be doing, and I'm proud to do that, and I'm going to continue to do that.
So, I guess one thing that would simply be, that if your thoughts on white privilege relate to D2 is your own experience, which I appreciate, and I appreciate where you've come from and what you've done, I do appreciate that, continue that, and we're happy to tell you our story too, if you want to talk.
Listen, I will get information, talk to you. Again, part of what I've said in the beginning is, I learn every day in this job. I do. I learn every day, and meeting people that come from my district that I can learn from to take that back when I go to Washington, D.C. is part of my job, and I make that commitment to you to sit down and talk to you.
Great. I could have Matthew Ward from Washington, Mike Mendola from Winona, and Robert Callister from Washington. Move towards the aisles, please. Brad, you have something?
Evening. My name is Matthew Ward from Washington. I wanted to ask you about H.R. 3293, Science in the Public Interest Act. So, this legislature has set up a test for grants by the National Science Foundation. You voted yes to this act. Do you feel like this opens a door for political interference in the act of science? Why should we have a political test for scientific research rather than research driven by best scientific information?
Again, I go back to my earlier point. I currently serve on the Science-Based Technology Committee, and we work on a lot of issues related to science and how we fund the National Science Foundation, how do we make sure that we're getting the best use of our tax dollars, making sure that science isn't politicized? Is part of an obligation that we have and that contains the taxpayer money? And so, I stand by my vote that I had on that, and I think making sure that we don't politicize science is an obligation we have. Thank you. Follow up? Sure.
Just a quick follow-up. So, if that's the case, would you commit to defending kind of continued research if that's impacted by this rule?
You show me what the evidence comes forth, I will look at that evidence, I will talk to see what way to get that, and I'll tell you that I will, on every issue I do that. I'll research it and look at the issue before I make it to a term finish. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Mendola from Winona on the line. My question has to do with our national defense. Now, I believe that the first duty of government is self-preservation, and if a nation can't protect itself, well, then it's not a nation at all, on all the freedoms and benefits of being living in a nation like the United States with the dawn if we don't protect our borders. The world is full of bad guys. The world is full of bad guys. Right now, we've got problems on both ends of the Asian continent, in Korea and in Syria. And we still have a huge commitment to NATO, yet during the Obama years, military spending and troop levels have been reduced. In...the spending has been reduced by nineteen percent from two thousand and nine. The latest figures I have are twenty-fifteen. And it's probably gone up since then. Also, our troop strength is down by eight percent. So, my question is, what is Congress going to do in terms of building our military back up again so we can feel safe here at home?
Can you make your mind up? Couple observations tonight. First of all, I have a lot of confidence in a couple people. General Mattis, who was approved by the U.S. Senate overwhelmingly with Democrats and Republicans, is the best person to have in the Department of Defense. Somebody that is absolutely respected on both sides. He was the first one confirmed by the Senate. He understands the military better than anybody. He talked about, when he went through that, that we have to rebuild our military. We have to rebuild our military to protect us against wars in the long term. And so, I have a lot of respect. The new CIA director, Mike Pompeo, excellent choice for the CIA, again, approved overwhelmingly. The new National Security Advisor, McMaster, worked for Republicans and Democrats, smart, bright person. Those three, I have a lot of confidence in, and they have asked for an increase in military spending for what we need to do. Switching subjects to what you talked about with Syria. I hope the president made the appropriate response to the gas attack in Syria. When you target innocent women and children in a village with sarin gas, that calls for a response, and it was an appropriate response. So, what happened? That response went after the airfield where that airfield, where they took it off to unleash this chemical attack. And that was...and if you remember, it got a lot of bipartisan support in terms of that attack. So, I think it was an appropriate response, and it was under the same authorization that President Obama used. Remember, after nine eleven, for sixteen years, we don't have in statute a... Remember, after nine eleven, for sixteen years, we don't have in statute a provision that allows an appropriate response for an act of aggression like that on innocent people. So President Obama, who gave to that, so did President Bush, so was the appropriate response. North Korea, North Korea is another. Now that, I think North Korea requires more of a diplomatic approach to it. We have to remember, within about sixty miles of the military zone, we have fifteen million people living in Seoul and the outskirts. It'd be very, but I think thus far, the necessary discretion has been used, working with our allies, Japan and South Korea, and also working with China. China has cut off all the coal going into North Korea, I think that's a good thing. But we have to be smart, we have to be strategic, and we have to improve our, we have to improve our defense system to do that. So, I am supportive, I continue to do that. Thank you, Mike. Next question.
Hi, I'm Robert Callister, I'm here in Washington, and my question is, do you support the, like the other Republicans, support killing net neutrality and internet privacy?
So, again, your question about net neutrality, so let's put that in context. So, again, what happened there? Process is important, right? So, at the end of the Obama administration, at the end of the Obama administration, there was a provision changed within the FCC to change how, right now, Facebook, Google, Amazon have the ability to look at what you search, right? So that, Obama put in a provision for the FCC, again, arbitrarily, through executive order for the FCC. What we voted on two weeks ago reversed that. And there is, there is a net zero effect on your privacy or the data collection that is done. That is the reality. That is the reality. Picking winners and losers as a part of this, which that did, is not the appropriate approach to technical. And so, listen, I would take that same vote again, and again, even the playing field, what was done at the end of the Obama administration, I don't think was the right approach because it was not through executive action. Thank you. Who's next?
Don Bergard. Don Ezal from Peoria, and Mike Travala from Peoria.
Who's next?
Congressman?
Oh, sorry.
This is Don Bergard from Oregon.
Yeah.
I have a question about Social Security expansion. Now, there are many people that are concerned about whether that Social Security will be able to survive or make the same payments to those who are retired after about twenty years, unless they get more of it funded. Now, they say that Social Security is going to be secure for another twenty years, but to make it secure for generations to come, what we need to do, in my opinion, from what I've read, we need to expand it so that everybody, regardless of the income that they earn, that they, all income, whether it's hundred twenty-seven thousand, or it's a million a year, should be subject to the payroll test, that that's the only way to make Social Security solid and to extend its benefits in Social Security. Will you commit yourself to expanding Social Security so everybody pays a fair share in the payroll test?
Thank you for your question. Listen, I'm committed to doing all that we have to do to save Social Security, we have to do that. So, what does that mean? The trajectory that Social Security is on, and Medicare and Medicaid, I mean, it's on a trajectory where we're not going to be able to afford Social Security as it exists today, it's not going to be able to, people are living a long life. So, what do we need to do on that? First of all, anybody that's retired or close to retirement shouldn't be affected at all. Because those are people that paid into the system, that did everything we asked them to do, it should not be affected. But, listen, I'm forty-eight years old, people that are going on Social Security now, we have to look at how we change Social Security to make it solid, right? So I think all options need to be on the table for that. Means testing, raise, listen, I'm forty-eight years old, raising the retirement age, I'm personally supportive of raising the retirement age. This is, yeah, this is taxpayer money at stake here. And so, we have to look at all the options. Follow up? Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Like most experts, when it's studied, if you thoroughly have said that the best way, at least in the immediate context, to improve the longevity of Social Security at the levels that we are paying down, is to make sure that everybody pays their fair share. That means people that are a million dollars a year pay the same way in payroll test as those that are making twenty thousand a year, that's the only way.
So I, you mentioned experts, right? So go, again, look legislative, so Erskine Moles, Bill Clinton's chief of staff, put together a commission, the Erskine, the Moles Simpson Commission, right? Bipartisan, Democrats and Republicans, that what they came up with is different from what you're saying. Now, I'm just saying, we may disagree, but I'm saying, there has been a commission that has looked at this numerous times. The trajectory is not sustainable, so we have to change the parameters for Social Security or it's not going to be around. So, so, I am supportive of a number of those provisions, and for particularly young people coming into the system, again, not affecting anybody that is close or on Social Security now, you can't do that. And I'm happy to talk to you further about the provisions in there and some of the solutions to doing that. Raising the retirement age, means testing for younger people, yes. And we, again, we may agree or disagree on some of these things, but I've said that before. Thank you. Who's next?
Before you go, did I have Connie Byersdorff from Peoria, and Bob Jansen from Hannah City. And then Mike, go ahead.
Congressman. There have been Benghazi, fast and furious, Irish, targeted scandals, hollowed out river plume, but nobody has ever been held accountable for that. I want to know why.
Listen, I think you raised some valid questions on holding people accountable, because we have had, you mentioned Benghazi, you mentioned a number of other things, it's very frustrating to a lot of Americans to see this kind of activity go on, not to hold people accountable for that. So elections, you know, there's top ones that have covered elections, and I think you'll see a renewed effort by the Department of Justice and this administration when it comes to looking into those things, is making sure those things, what I'm saying is, I don't think we should go back and, and look at those things, we should learn from those instances to make sure that we hold people accountable for inappropriate activities.
Yeah, it appears to me that there's two sets of rules, one for the private sector and one for the public sector. The public sector seem to get away with a lot more stuff than the guy in the private sector.
Your question at the end about the public and private sector, I agree with that. And we need to make sure, I think that was part of, you know, I represent a pretty rural district, but the people that came out this last election and came out in droves were upset with the direction of the country. They were upset with people not thinking that their rights or their opinions are being taken into account, and there was a lot of people frustrated with them. But what's great about our democracy is, that no matter what, you can come out on Election Day and rise up, and you look at the votes in my district, you look at the votes in rural America, you look at the votes in the Midwest that came out, they wanted to change, they wanted a different direction. And we always have to remember that in these positions. Thank you, Mike.
And Baki. I want to address a question regarding the largest industry you have in your district, and that's agriculture. And I would like for you to give us an update on what's going on with the agricultural bill and how it's going to affect us. And just one thing I wanted to comment back on the water's focus bill, as you discussed, I don't think the people here realize that law meant that every village, town, city, if you had a water pump in the street, you were going to pay for that. That's all wrong.
Thank you, Mike. Regarding agriculture, so the district I represent is the ninety largest agriculture district in the entire country, in terms of corn and soybean production. Ag is vitally important to my district, whether that's crop insurance, whether that's trade, whether that's ethanol and biofuels, whether that's, you know, regulatory issues, how do we help our family farmers and our farming operations in our district? Next year, 2018, we'll have a farm bill. Every five years, we have a farm bill, so it's coming up in 2018. The big issues in there will be, where do we put the level of crop insurance? What do we do about trade? What do we do about some of the SNAP programs that we have? That's part of the farm bill. And these farm bills can be somewhat controversial, but I remind people all the time, ag is the number one industry in Illinois. It's not even up in Chicago, it's the number one industry for the entire state of Illinois. And ag is vital to our economy here, whether that's implement products, but whether that's our corn and soybeans. We also have to remember, we have to have global markets for our commodities. About a third of the corn grown and soybeans grown here in Tazewell County goes somewhere else around the world. Having open and free trade for our agriculture commodities is very, very important. That would be part of the farm bill when we look at that next year. But we always have to be conscious when it comes to agriculture of how we're promoting, how we're promoting our farmers, how we're promoting ag. I, as part of this job, when I got elected, I set up an ag advisory committee. We meet every quarter, so I have forty farmers, from a variety, from a variety of different farming backgrounds, especially crop folks. I got some folks that work in grain out there, some people that work on the lox and dams.